The approval of the minutes of the regular.
No, we're in the.
No.
Regular minutes.
Got me messed up too.
All right, we are synced up.
So I think we're good.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Were you gonna ask us?
I thought we went over the agenda. I thought we always asked about the agenda.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yes. You're right.
Number two.
Item number two. I missed item two. Okay, item number one, we did, we called it to order and did roll call. Everybody's here. Item number two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of March 3rd, 2020.
I want to know about the new fire truck, please.
New fire truck?
What do you want to know, Jerry?
What color is it?
It'll be red.
What do you think it's gonna be?
Always one.
So.
Big and red.
That's what I wanted to hear.
It's a triple combination pumper, which means it has a full complement of ladders on it, water tank and a pump. That's what we order to run frontline on fire calls and other emergencies.
It also probably has wheels on it.
Yep, that's a good idea.
It's replacing a 30-year apparatus that we use, not every day, it's in reserve, but it's been a pretty good engine, but it's showing some wear and tear and it's time to try to get on a replacement schedule. Our frontline engines, we try to get through where we don't have anything much over 20 years of age on the frontline. Glad to have it. It'll be welcome. Those guys all like a new one. It's been a few years since we bought one.
Do we still send out those units on an emergency like a home, or do we use something different now?
Well, for your structure fires and fire calls, for the majority of those, besides grass fires, will be in the engine. The response we changed last year was to medical calls and help lifts. We did a lot of just citizen assists, helping people back into bed, people that have fallen. And to reduce mileage and wear and tear and brake wear and tire wear on the big engine, which are more expensive, we started to run grass rigs on those type of calls. It's working out well. It's serving the purpose we thought it would.
There is no downside to it?
No. Probably should have been done earlier.
You bet.
We weren't the first ones to think of that.
No, I've seen other towns do that, so.
Any others?
No, sir, thank you very much. The other, only other question I had was about the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and we make a payment to that. Is that for interest or what is that?
Those are debt payments, and Aaron can explain that. They're specific, debt payments are.
Right, so they're different debt payments, and some of them are principal, some of them are interest, depending on which loan that we're paying on. The one that's on tonight, I think, is specifically for construction interest on the SRF program, because we don't have our debt schedule, it hasn't been fully drawn down yet, so we just have construction interest until we fully draw it on those funds and we'll have to set the compensation schedule after that.
Okay.
That's all, Mayor.
Just for the record, I don't get any of it.
But you're still gonna make us pay it back, aren't you?
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Okay. Seeing now, we'll move on to study items. Item three, 3.1, discuss new iCompass agenda platform.
Let's see why I don't usually talk. Okay, so the purpose of this was to make things easier for staff to get everything in one area, and it's also to be a little more accessible, a little more user-friendly for the public, to try to encourage citizens to become more involved with different boards and to see what's going on. It's just another platform to keep everything in one area and readily accessible. When you come into our website, there are a couple of different ways to get to the portal. For very easy access, you can go to the live meetings button. You can also go to the government tab, which you can go into the meetings function, the meetings option down here. The other way to get in there, if you go to our city and with the city events calendar, that will take you to the calendar events, the meetings that are scheduled already. Right now, we're working on getting that adjusted to go straight into the portal. So the best way to go in right now is probably through the live meetings. It'll take you directly there. If you go to the Welcome to City of Enid tab, it will give you a little bit of a rundown of what's currently available. And as we turn on different parts of the system, those will show up here. So there's a little more explanation. And then going into the home tab, there's a brief introductory that tells you a little bit about what you'll find in the portal. We have a lot of information. Again, there's some things that we're still working through. But if you, of course, go to livestream, that should get you right to the meeting. The meeting will log on about five minutes before it starts, the live feed. So, through your live feed, that's pretty accessible. I think some people were having, don't want to echo, a little bit of trouble trying to find the meetings before, so that makes it a little easier to find. And then going back into the homepage, this is very handy, the subscribe. The options under here, right now, we have all of the boards that we post. They're available. You can go in and sign up with your email address and select any boards that you'd like to get the agendas for. And then whenever those agendas are ready and they're published, you'll automatically get that in your email. Once we turn on the boards and commissions function, you'll also have an opportunity to sign up to, to apply for different boards, to be notified when vacancies are coming up. So it's an extra tool, and it's very convenient, because then it's just automatic. Your information's in there, and you'll get that information as it is available. You have all of your upcoming meetings here. If you click on any of those, it will take you to the agenda if it's available. So that's a handy tool there. For those who may not be familiar with who their councilmen are, if you come here, there's a brief bio of everybody that's on the commission. It also will show what boards they're involved in, has their contact information. So that's another tool to have citizens become more familiar with their government.
Come on, Rob's always.
Well.
And if you have anything you'd like to add, just let us know. We can get that in there.
The, when you sent us the logins, I got two login things, one for the Bezel at Enid.org, one for Enid War III. And I set up the one with my name, but it only shows me as being part of the 911 board and not the city council. Is that, do I need to go do something else?
Um, no, I'll go back through and check on that on the backside.
Cool.
Still, still working through some of the bugs.
Sure.
Forget it. But yeah, we definitely want you to have access to it. We do have option of an automatic electronic vote, which I know at some point will start here. But if you go through, select the meeting or the person, the date that the meeting was, it will show that person's attendance. It'll show so how they voted. So if there's an item that you're following, you can go through and see how each person voted for that particular item.
Is that not populated right now?
Yeah, it should be. We just don't have a lot of meetings in there right now. So as we get more into it, there'll be more votes to track.
Do you have to go in there and manually populate that? I guess you would, wouldn't you?
There's some information that we're getting into the system right now, and then some is gonna be migrated in just from like the documents we've had previously. So as that migrates in.
I'm talking about the voting. You'd have to every meeting, look at the minutes?
Um, once, once we go to electronic voting, it'll automatically show up as you guys vote. A lot of the boards won't use that. Some of the smaller boards, they won't use the electronic voting. But as soon as the liaison goes in and puts those votes in, those will be available.
So we're still gonna be doing the fun switch-flippy thing?
Just for.
Because that's the best job, that's part of the, best part of the whole thing.
And I get to do the tap thing. But yeah, just for now, and then, until we're sure that everything's lined up, it's better to have a safety net.
We're gonna have all the old meeting agendas and minutes available here. Or everything that was on the website, anyway, will, will be back.
Yeah, we're gonna have that migrated over, so that'll all be available. The municipal code, I think a lot of times people have a hard time finding the code that they're looking for. So now, when you go in there, it takes you directly to there. You could skip a couple steps and go in and see whatever it is you're looking for. And then, this will be a different link eventually. When, we have our calendar here, so you have your calendar in two different places. This is a larger pop-up version, so you can see everything going on on that particular day. And again, over here, under today's meetings, or on the calendar, you can go through and open up the agenda and/or video, whatever you choose to do. The meetings tab, it will show you our boards and commissions that are listed on the calendar, as well as any upcoming meetings, contact information. You can look to see who the members are, so it'll take you back to the bios. Now, the last thing, I think everybody has probably seen it, but when you go into the meeting, you have a couple of different ways to view it. It automatically comes up in this format. I recommend the split screen, or, I'm gonna go back to the last meeting, because it has all the bits and pieces to it. To get all aspects of the packet, if you will click on the video, it will take you to the split screen. You'll have the video available here, and once you, I'll pause that. If you want to open that up, you can watch the video and go through the agenda and the items simultaneously. These are timestamped, so anytime you see a little camera there, it will take you directly to that portion of the meeting. So you have your agenda, your corresponding background, you can access any attachments, have the video. And then, another nice thing is the notes function. If you sign in, you have an opportunity to take notes on the agenda. Anything you put in this area down here, you can save it under your user, and.
Is that an open record?
Uh, that might be, that will be a.
If I write smart-ass notes, is that subject open record or what?
It might be.
Okay. So you don't write smart-ass notes?
But anyone using this, whether it's a board member or a citizen, you can add notes if you'd like to go back there and follow up on it.
Sure. I would be careful.
Prudent.
Okay.
But that kind of gives you the whole.
There is a, there is an exemption for, you know, drafts and things like that. So we could maybe, but I would just not put anything you don't want anyone to see.
I will take that to heart, Carol.
So that's just kind of a brief overview. We are still adding some, some components to it.
Chuck, right, don't say.
But again, it's just to kind of get things out there. There are ways to track different items or different projects. There are different ways to kind of use your.
Looks good.
Unless anybody has questions?
Okay. Any questions from anybody? I really like what you're doing. I think it's gonna be valuable for us to look at, but more than that, I think it's gonna be valuable for all the constituents to look at. And if they're wanting to track a single topic, it's a lot easier to be able to do that than it is to page through and look through all the other stuff, so I think it's gonna provide a lot of benefit, so.
How searchable is it all gonna be?
From what I can tell, it's gonna be very searchable.
So if I search a search term, will it not just search the agenda, but also the attachments and the minutes?
That's my understanding.
Cool.
Like, so far, we don't have a lot of information, but here is the search tool. Again, it kind of gives a brief instruction, how to go about it, and it has a couple of different ways to search.
Okay. But you could put like 2021 budget?
You can track by budget. If you have a project number, you can track by project number.
Colleague, would it like use all the memory?
Maybe. You know, it's okay. It is cloud-based, by the way. Everything that we have on here is gonna be cloud-based, so it doesn't take up additional room on the servers, so.
All right. Cool. Good job. Thank you.
Very good.
All right. Item 3.2, discuss Northwest Oklahoma Emergency Management Conference. Mike? Mike? There he is.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming and doing our welcome this morning.
That's quite right.
Sounds really nice of you.
It's my job.
For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Mike Honigsburg, and I'm the Emergency Management Director for the city and the county. And my job is to prepare for, respond to, mitigate, and help in the recovery process in the event we ever have a major emergency or disaster. Right now, we are hosting the Northwest Oklahoma Emergency Management Workshop, and this is the third time that we have done this in 15 years. Everybody likes to come to Enid, because there's more to do here, and they like to spend their money too, which is a good thing for us. So anyway, today, I called Drug Day. Our police department was a big part of our, of our agenda. And tomorrow, we have folks from the state coming in, railroad, the state school association, Homeland Security, the National Weather Service, Vance Air Force Base Fire Department, talking about crash protocols and this kind of thing. And then on Friday, we're gonna have our, we have several people coming in for a talk, but then at 10 o'clock, we're gonna have a tabletop exercise, and we're gonna destroy the Broadway Tower with a C-130 aircraft. And then we're gonna talk through the response and the recovery process, of course, too. We will have military folks there, we'll have state folks there, OG&E's coming, ONG is coming, our city public works folks are gonna be there, police and fire, of course, myself. And the state is gonna facilitate this, since I'm involved in this too. It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a good exercise. And for those of you that have time and would like to come and see how this is done, you're more than welcome to come up to the Benson Room up here at Convention Hall and, and visit with us and kind of see how the process works. So we do these exercises basically because you never know what can happen. And with all the planes in the air anymore around here, crashes can happen. I've lived here all my life, and there hasn't been that many, but, you know, we all know it does happen occasionally and that kind of thing. So we go through worst-case scenario and, and kind of come up with new protocols and procedures on how we would do things in the event, and hope it never happens, of course. And then we just kind of go from there. Well, I guess there's our, there's our agenda right there. So anyway, today's, today's agenda went really well. We had a few little glitches in there, but we got those fixed, so it wasn't a problem. And so we're looking forward to what goes on in the next couple of days. Any questions?
Are you talking at all about any kind of like response, you know, any kind of COVID-19 response? I mean, that was Monday morning, attorney, another attorney walks my office, say, what's the city's gonna do, gonna do if we have to start doing kind of quarantines in response to?
The health department will be in charge of that situation. And so whenever that occurs, then we'll work in conjunction with the health department. We do have a pandemic.
Talking about that at all during the conference?
No, we're not, no, we're not really discussing that. The agenda was set before all this occurred, and so therefore, it's not part of that. But the health department does have a pandemic plan in the event stuff happens. And it's kind of a very, well, it's a very detailed plan. And so if, if that has to be implemented, then we'll adjust and do what we need to do to help them facilitate that. Law enforcement will be involved, fire, I mean, all of us would be involved in some way, shape, or form. So, in fact, today, I found out that the state director will not be here in the morning, because they're coordinating with the governor's office in getting a coronavirus plan in place. So it's just, you know, it's just the way it goes sometimes. So we'll have an hour to figure out what we're gonna do, and we'll go from there, so, no problem.
Useful thing for him.
We try to cover everything we can possibly think of in, in what we do here. And like I said, you know, I coordinate with, with local, state, federal officials in whatever's going on and, you know, to make sure that we can get through whatever happens without a whole lot of problems. Yes, sir.
Mike, I think you said that the exercise was Friday, but it's really Thursday.
Excuse me, Thursday, that's right, that's right. So, thank you.
The practice is on Thursday.
Thursday from 10 to noon, and then we'll eat lunch.
It's empty, though, so that's okay. We gotta practice first.
Joe corrects me whenever I make mistakes, and I do the same to him, so that's good. Hey, that's okay. It's not a problem with me.
Every time you host these, whether they're here or somewhere else, I'm sure that tabletop exercise is part of that plan.
Most of the time, yes, because it's hard to do a functional or a full-scale.
Right.
Those are, those take a lot of time to coordinate, plus they're expensive when you have to move equipment and that kind of thing. It's just easier to sit at a table, put a situation out in front of them, and then talk through what we're gonna do. And plus, having all these other folks here, other ENs, health department officials, the other public companies and that kind of thing there, you get a lot of good ideas, you know? We have protocols and plans for a reason, but exercises help us enhance those particular plans.
So, I'll argue for doing the, the exercises as part of this program. Also, that you're picking exercises that are germane to the area you're in. We have airplanes that are, it's possible a 130 could come in here. So I think, I think it's great that you're doing that. I also appreciate the fact that you're inviting the base, so it's a total community effort, because in fact, if a disaster happens, that's what's gonna happen. So I think we need to practice the way it is. We're gonna do it in real life, so I appreciate the realism and the effort that you guys put in.
And another reason why I want, I picked this exercise, you know, you know, the Broadway Tower, I mean, it's make-believe that we're destroying it anyway, even though some of us would like to see it gone. But no, but seriously, though, this, this could happen in any jurisdiction, anywhere in the country, and it has before. And so what we're gonna talk about will be there for all the jurisdictions here in Northwest Oklahoma, since they're part of Vance's, you know, flight area anyways. And, you know, then they can take the information and the after-action review that we, that we write up and apply it to their particular plans in their respective jurisdictions.
Mayor, we do two aircraft accident exercises per year, one on-base and one off-base specifically, so we can exercise that coordination between us and downtown.
Yeah. Good.
Any questions?
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mike, for everything you do. You're always on watch.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, we have people that protect us every day. They look like firemen and policemen, but you're kind of the invisible force that helps protect us all the time, so appreciate that.
Well, I'm also a rural firefighter, so I mean, you know, I'm involved a lot with a lot of that, so anyway. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Yep. Item 3.3, discuss commercial medical marijuana grower facility ordinance. Sounds like a Carol question.
Well, I worked this up with Commissioner Mason. It was, we had a plant, a plant nursery used by review occur, and it got approved. And he indicated that he was going to grow commercial medical marijuana and, in a building. And the thought was that perhaps we need to consider whether we want that to happen in most residential areas. So we are not, and, and I've had a couple of calls since the newspaper article, we're not saying this does not affect individual patients, or if this were to pass, it does not affect patients who are growing their own medicine or caregivers. This is the commercial medical grower. And, and because there are some security measures to prevent unauthorized entrance into the grow building and restrictions on minors entering the property, I am of the opinion we can make a distinction between a commercial medical marijuana grow facility, which is not a retail place, it's just where you would grow marijuana and then sell it to, I guess, a dispensary, and this plant nursery. The one that is, has already been approved would be a grandfathered use. And where we're allowing it is in agriculture, and then, we're allowing it in agriculture, and then we're skipping the, the Rs, and then we pick it back up, let's see, with light commercial as, as a used by review, and then we go into, it's not a complete list, because as you know, in our lists, they pick up, like for instance, in C3, it says any use permitted in C1 light commercial. So we don't have to put it in to every single facility. But basically, this would allow it used by review in C1, and then it would go through the Cs and the industrials would allow you to grow marijuana in a building and in agriculture.
What's the distinction between, under the state law, between a commercial grow operation and somebody growing it for their own use? Is it if they grow it for their own use, plus sell it to one person, are they commercial, or is there a threshold?
It is for their own use. So if they have a patient license, it's a, you have, you can have your six plants for yourself. Then if, and a caregiver can grow for the number of patients that they are caregiving for. That's all they can do. If you want to grow for someone else and you're not a caregiver, then, and you want to sell it, then you need to be a commercial medical marijuana.
And that triggers all the security stuff and all that that's in the state. But the, the folks growing as a caregiver would not be triggered by this?
Nothing. All, they have to do the state statute, which, but they can grow it and they can take it to the person.
And they can grow with their residentially zoned property as a caregiver?
Yes, yes. We can't regulate that. That is state law.
This would only limit?
The commercial.
The big commercial grow operations will be in an ag zoning, C1 with special use, or C3 and the I with?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a limit to how many, for the caregiver, is there a limit to how many patients I can have?
Yeah. That's under statute.
Yeah.
Is it, okay, I just want to make sure that, oh, okay, I got 200 that'll work.
Well, you have to get each one of them, you have to, you have to get a permit for each one. And there is, I can't actually, I should be careful. each one. And there is, I can't actually, I should be careful. I'm not, one, we've had so many different versions of the regulations, I may be thinking of the wrong one. But what I do know is they have to go in, and they have to sign up for each one of their patients. So it is, and, and they get paperwork and stuff, and the Police Department can ask, may I see your, your permits for your patients?
Do we have, is there a way we can find out how many patients? Because that, that number can get pretty, pretty large relatively quickly in terms of having the plants. They can happen when, in a residential facility, if they're, if they're acting as a caregiver.
We can't preempt it anyway, but-
Yes, and we, we can't preempt it. They have to have their place inspected. And there is some, I can check and see if we can, I, I can, when we bring this, if we're going to bring this back, I can have how many patients a caregiver can give, and whether or not, who has access to that. I believe, you know, there is some privacy component to the caregiver slash patient, but not for any of these commercial medical growers.
And they don't have any security requirements? Because I mean, just for-
That was my question.
Just for example, if you have a caregiver that's got five patients, they've got 30 plants at that particular point, and that's, it's an easy target for somebody who's looking to get their hand on a considerable amount of marijuana relatively easily if there's no security requirements at all.
It is not supposed, you're not supposed to, if you can see the plants-
Okay.
From the street, with normal sight, not enhanced sight, and not enhancing your position. So you can't, you know, get on a ladder or something. But if, just walking down the street, you can see the plants, then, then you have to do something different. There are some rules like that. But those, those rules, whenever it comes to caregiver and patient, not the business aspect-
Sure.
It is much more restrictive what municipalities can do. We have much more we can do in the, in the businesses rather than the patients. Because the question was mostly about patients.
Sure.
I think the reason we're asking is, we just want to make sure there's a cap on how many. Because who would ever get a commercial license if you can get as many as you want?
Well-
Well, but if you get a commercial license, then you can, with under one license, grow a large quantity and sell to distributors.
Right. Caregivers can't sell.
It's not sold, it's for the specific use of the designated patient of the caregiver.
Yeah. And, and the caregiver is, I mean, it's not a, the caregiver is, you know, like a, was supposed to be like a patient, or, or, you know, a helper aide. Not, I mean, it's not, it, it is not a, a for-profit thing. And I don't think there are that many caregivers, to tell you the truth. The last time I looked, there's lots of patients, not so many caregivers.
Sure. You know, I, there's a couple of concerns. The other one is, again, you've got, you've got a large volume, potential for a large volume, volume of marijuana in a, in a, in a particular area that is unsecured at that particular point. I mean, the target of a crime. I mean, this is something that they're seeing in all, you know, a lot of these legalized states. You know, there's not a lot of cash on hand, but you have a lot of things that can be monetized in that area. And so that's, that's, that's a concern for not finding a way in order to, you know, I don't know, that's, that's difficult.
But it's also all out of our hands.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, we just seen it happen one about three weeks ago, where the young man went in and robbed him for some marijuana. I mean, might as well just legalize it. Because I mean, we're just making legalized dope dealers.
That'd be fine.
Man, really, Mike, just legalize around across the board.
People rip off pharmacies.
And save lives.
Well, the purpose of bringing it was to make sure that we could craft something to bring back. And I think it started out specifically with Mr. Mason because of an MIPC meeting.
It did. And the guy that brought that ended up in a, it's in a residential area right next to, next to a residence, that he's gonna put this.
It's zoned agriculture, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
It's agricultural zoned, isn't it?
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the one behind jumbos.
No.
Uh, no, no, we're not. Sorry. No.
My mistake.
And so that's what brought it all off.
Yes, absolutely.
We don't wake up someday and have what we have out there behind jumbo, out on our residential lots around town. So-
Well, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be like that. It, because they are in, it, the plant nursery can't be as big. There are limits on how much the plant nursery can be, based on the lot involved. So it's not, so there are limits, but it's still gonna be a building with marijuana in there.
So they're gonna ruin this inside?
Yeah. For most purposes, I think.
Yeah.
Well, or a plastic hut.
How are they gonna keep the word from getting out?
Yeah.
I mean, let's wake up, really.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a solid structure, though, right?
As long as there's a fence high enough to, to obstruct it from normal sight, I, I didn't hear anything that would-
Well, only the plants, is what I understood. I mean, if they want to put a, a plastic quoncet hut, and you can't see the plants, the fence only has to be high enough just to block the plants.
Well, now, we're, we're talking about, I think we're talking about the commercial grow place.
That's what I'm talking about.
Which does have more limitation to that. By the way, the caregiver can only, looking at the statute, the caregiver can only grow on behalf of five people.
That's what, that's what I remember.
All right.
But I think there are some pretty serious limitations on the structure of a commercial operation in state law. It's not, I don't think it could just be a plastic quoncet. I mean, I think you have to have, like, fencing around the whole operation, there's some-
You do, but it's my understanding, they don't specify the height, do they, Carol?
There've been a lot of versions, and I don't think the current version, you know, it obviously, you know, when we drive into town on the, going west, we see something that is pretty obvious, that is a commercial marijuana facility.
Right. But it's my understanding that, that the fencing has to be secure enough to keep minors out. Is that what I understood? Therefore, a four-foot fence wouldn't do it.
I don't think they specify what fence. Maybe they look at the location. But yes, you're supposed to be able to keep minors and, and other people. You're supposed to have an ability to keep people out.
Well, that, that was the purpose of that. Because whenever I saw that, I was just concerned that we'd see them popping up everywhere. And I think if we're gonna treat them like an industry, which is exactly what they are, then they need to follow whatever, I mean, we, we wouldn't allow a ball bearing factory to be put on a residential lot, right? So we have ordinances that say where we can place those. And that's all we're trying to do. Split that out from a commercial grower and a nursery. So those are two different things.
Okay.
Is that sound close enough to bring back the future the way it is, or?
I mean, it's really simple the way it is. I mean, there's nothing particularly complicated or onerous. And if Carol says we're not running afoul of state law, then that's fine. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to get in the way of caregiver growers or patients growing their own stuff. But, I mean, we put all kinds, you can't grow chickens in residential zoned property. We put all kinds of restrictions, and what you can't do in our zoning. As long as we're allowing it in ag zoning and commercial and industrial, then it's kind of in line with what we require. I mean, I guess we allow growing some, we allow growing other crops.
Yeah.
But it's really, yeah, I mean, it's more in the nature of a, of an industrial or commercial operation.
But the other crops, you know, there, we haven't been, other crops, some carrots, tomatoes, a little garden patch, is not going to elicit the same activity or interest.
Shooting activity. I'm not that, I, I really don't think that marijuana's gonna be eliciting that much shooting activity, as opposed to, I mean, as opposed to carrots, yes. But as opposed to, like, other commercial operations, I mean, I think somebody's a lot more likely to go rip off somewhere with, with a bunch of cash on hand. I mean, moving bales of pot is not, I'd rather rip off cash if I'm gonna rip somebody off. Or bottles of oxy are worth a hell of a lot more. But, you know, go to Rix and rip off the pharmacy, and you'll be a lot more profitable. So I, I'm not that worried about the safety part of it, because the state laws are so restrictive. I don't want to get, you know, too freaked out about it, but this is an easy, simple, this is no big deal.
Okay. But I'm glad you brought it forward. Answered a lot of questions than I had, and I think others as well. So, if anybody's got any other ideas?
And they just have to follow whatever building and code enforcement requirements that would be in that zone area, that zone area.
And their permit requirements.
And the permit, site plan.
Site plan for commercial properties. There's another word for it, for industrial properties. I think it's a-
Plot.
A planning develop, do you remember, Chris?
It's called a development plan.
There we go. Development plan versus site plan.
There are some qualifiers on that. In I-1, it's required development plan. In I-2 and I-3, it's required if it's on an archeryal or within 300 feet of an archeryal. So there are some-
Yeah.
Industrial properties that don't meet those conditions, that would not be required to do a development plan.
There's also, not every, in downtown, the C4, site plans are not, site plans are not required.
Who, who has record of how many marijuana-growing outfits we have? Is it the Police Department?
The, the state-
Department of Agriculture.
Okay, do they report to you all as far as on record or anything? It's just strictly the-
They would give permits through the Department of Agriculture, and they're, they're oversight. We don't know if they're oversight.
Okay, so as far as, like, you know, revenue contributor, taxation wise, I mean, how do we keep up with that?
Well, Aaron reported a few meetings ago, they are, the dispensaries, I believe, are collecting sales tax. And I don't remember exactly what that number was. Aaron might, but it was, it was formalized over a year, and it seemed like it was, I don't know if I want to say significant, but it was, it was-
Real money.
Yes.
It was $182,000, and it was tracking to be over 300, right?
Right, we'll reanalyze that out.
Yeah.
So, and I think there's, I'm just guessing, I, I don't know what the exact number is, I think it's like 16 dispensaries in town, there's a whole lot.
So is it, is it tax-free for the growers, you know, because of dispensaries are, are paying money, taxes? I mean, is it tax-free for the growers if we have no record of who they are, or how do we keep up with that?
They pay property tax.
And by the way, it's all, all those records are available. OMA publishes a list of every licensed grower, every licensed, I mean, I just pulled the list here, there's 47 licensed growers in Enid.
In Enid?
Yeah.
Okay.
In Enid licensed dispensaries, or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's all, all here on OMA's website. They break it down by growers, processors, dispensaries, transporter, and laboratory.
What is that?
And we prob, we could, we probably possibly have a few growers in residential already.
Yeah, there's, that's a lot, yeah.
I wonder if the county's gonna reassess the value, though, that property now?
I hope so.
Because it is a business.
Fair point.
They did not put in a pool?
I mean, there's like, the, from the OMA's website, there are 349 pages of growers, licensed growers in Oklahoma. Each page has, like, 20 people. I mean, it's a lot, there's a lot licensed there. Good grief.
Question becomes whether or not that ups your property value or lowers it, when you become, when your house becomes a crow house. And your neighbors.
21 licensed dispensaries in Enid.
21?
Mm-hmm.
I've heard that.
47.
All right, let's grow. 21.
Split it in half.
No, I believe so.
Okay. It's a lot of medicine.
A lot of donuts.
Thanks for bringing it forward. It sounds to me like everybody's kind of satisfied with it. It was a good education session for all of us to figure out what's going on, but.
Okay.
All right, item number four, discuss railroad crossing and school bus ordinance.
Okay. This is one of those interesting state mandates. The state has decided that it has created a new fund called the School Bus Stop Revolving Fund, or Cameras for School Bus Stop Revolving Fund. And if, for, if you actually, if you do not stop, or you overtake a school bus, when it has its loading signals activated, then you are guilty of a fine. And the fine used to be $500. It doesn't happen that much in the city of Enid. But what this does is it reduces the fine to $400, plus costs, with a state mandated special assessment of $100. Because we are forced to take $100 and give it to a fund, so that our schools can then ask for money for cameras to, to be put on the school buses.
On the school bus or in the school bus?
I don't know. And it is, I am hoping that it is an automatic one. And it's not one that the school bus driver is going to have to actually utilize, because then we might end up having worse accidents with the guy or, or woman having to do it. But that part is not clear.
So the camera's supposed to identify a car that's, or truck that's passing around it?
Yeah, they just mount it on the back of the, in the front.
Yeah, and I'm assuming it's all automatic, but, but that was unclear from the two state laws. So-
Well, I read the thing, it didn't make a lot of sense.
No. Right, okay.
I was like, what?
Yeah. And while we were doing it, we spend a lot of time, we have very complicated fine system. And so we are, so, we are making it simpler. So for instance, I would imagine if, on some of these, involving vehicles, the judges, what we're, what we're doing is instead of saying that it depends on whether there was an accident or not, we'll ju, we're just going to the fine, and then, you know, the judge can make a determination of how serious it is, rather than have a determination of whether the acci-
Happening about.
Yeah.
So Carol, does, so this all goes into a state pot, and then-
Yes.
And then municipalities or school districts get to solicit from the state to get the funds back? Is there any guarantee towards school districts that they're going to get a, a portion of it? So essentially, they're just going to take the fines from Enid, and it's gonna go to Tulsa, Oklahoma City?
Yes, and-
Donors.
And, and we have the-
Unless any public schools get really aggressive.
The forensic science fee, the fingerprint fee, the DNA fee, which is really large, it's $150.
But we're just doing what state laws-
Right, we, we have no choice. They're all redirecting the debt to us.
Whatever.
But-
And that's the same thing, and then the other one was just going around a, a crossing guard?
Right.
And in, doing that fine?
Yes. But, but that fine doesn't have a camera yet, nor a special fund. No assessment for that one.
Whatever. Keyword is "yet."
Yeah, we're true. Okay. The third one is a truancy. And we hadn't real, we decided, my assistant told me, oh my goodness, now there's fifth grade school, I'm, excuse me, a five-year-old school. So there is, so there's a, so we were going to change our ordinance to provide for the optional five-year, five-year-old school. But after reading, and it, and this is very short compared to what the state law says, it isn't, you have to do special things to get your kid into five-year-old school, and there's special, and what I- it isn't, you have to do special things to get your kid into five-year-old school and there's special, and what I rather than write out all that and realizing that we don't, I can't remember us ever charging someone with like a six-year-old who's truant. I mean, most of the time it, it's, you know, older kids. And I can't imagine that someone would go through the trouble of getting into a five-year-old, four-and-a-half-year school and then not show up. So I just decided, and you guys can tell me that I'm wrong, if you want me to put in the two pages that would explain how you get to a five, when you're five, I really think this covers all the kids that we deal with, is the six and the and the up to 18, and then the 12-year-olds. Then, I simplified the ordinance, because the ordinances have gotten, excuse me, state law's gotten very complicated because they want to explain everything about observing a religious holy day, or homeschools, or excused by school and parent. You know, like what person at the school the parent has to go to and how long the parent has to, you know, ahead of the event. And my thought was, for our purposes, all we need to know is that there are exceptions. And exception for minor observing religious holiday who receives an excused absence from school. We don't care how they got the excused absence. So I just made it simpler so that it would be, you know, the prosecutor and the police officer doesn't need to know everything. Like, you know, the homeroom teacher then takes it to the principal.
We're letting the school determine it and making it race Judicada as to
Exactly. So this is simpler and you know, if, if it's fine, we'll bring it back.
Did we have an ordinance before?
We did. And it's the one that you see here without the, the line strike-throughs.
This is not new grant?
No. It's just that I, I had not added the five-year-olds and I decided that we really didn't need the five-year-olds. And then, once I got started, I thought, well, I should just clean this up and not have all the, because this hasn't been changed in a very long time. And if we changed it to mirror state law, we would have like six pages. Because now they specify in the statutes, you know, which person at the school you talk to and how, you know.
But the changes you made basically encompass all the changes state law reflects anyway.
Yes.
So.
And everything we need to know.
So, an example of where we might get involved in this is during school day, kids are out there getting in trouble, the police are called, and then come to find out we checked with the school, they're not it's not an excused absence, right?
Right.
That's, we don't, we don't go out and search those kids out, do we? I mean
Every, I mean, a long time ago, there, that happened. I mean, and I, I suppose we could, I mean, if we see a bunch of kids and we know that it's school time, we might stop them if they're, they're doing something. Yeah. And, and, and as he knows, the schools now have their own officers. So actually, a lot of the truancy is actually done by the police officers at the schools, not us, but we prosecute them in municipal court.
Because it's applying municipal ordinances, just by
Got it.
by a warm body, licensed by EPD, but works inside the school. Yeah?
Yes.
It's hard for me to picture a five-year-old doing that.
Exactly. And we do not charge. You have to be 12 years old before you are actually charged. If you're truant and you're under that age, then the parent is the responsible party. But most of them are older.
So they're not going to have any, like, the charts with somebody standing in front of them 36 inches high?
Yeah.
It's by age.
All right. Now, I think that sounds reasonable. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you. Five, discuss truancy, no, we just did that, sorry. Six, discuss budget calendar?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, yesterday I did send out tentative schedule to you to be in compliance with the Oklahoma State Budget Act. There are a few requirements that we have. We have to present a budget to you, a draft budget, 30 days prior to the new fiscal year. 15 days prior to that, or to the beginning of the fiscal year, we also have to do a budget hearing and we have to advertise for that budget hearing so that the citizens could come and speak. And that has to occur five days at least before the hearing. And then at least seven days before the beginning of the year, we have to approve that budget so that we can have it in place. Practically, we need a little longer than that to get everything in place, so we typically back that up about a month from all those required dates in state statute. Based on that, we will be here till whatever time we need to on April the 24th to get the draft finished and out to you in email form at least, and then have it available that Monday, April 27th, in paper form for anybody who wants it. We would have our first special budget meeting at 5:00 PM on April the 30th. We have a regular meeting on May the 5th, and we would discuss at the regular meeting some of the budgets there, and then propose to have a special meeting again on the 7th, and do the budget hearing also on the 7th. As of right now, we don't have any meeting scheduled, the 11th through the 15th. That is, the Washington DC trip is planned during that week, and so we'll have that week off. And then we would like to bring back the budget for consideration of approval at the May 19th meeting. If we need to push that to the June 2nd meeting, we would need that with an emergency as our resolutions take 30 days to go into effect. And so, this is what we're proposing. If there are any dates or conflicts that we know of, we'd like to get this adjusted now so that people can plan accordingly. And you guys can have that on your calendar. The only thing, we've reviewed community events and graduations and all of that, and the only thing that we show that we could come up with is May 8th for Enid High is scheduled on the 5th, but that is a regularly scheduled meeting, and I'm not sure if that affects anybody on the commission this year. No?
All right.
We good with these dates? All right?
Yep.
And we'll move forward.
All righty, thank you.
Eighth and final budget round.
Item number seven, discuss update on Meadow Lake Low Water Crossing, Downtown Trail Link, and Trail Signage.
Okay, Mayor and Commissioners, I'll give the update on the Meadow Lake Low Water Crossing. It is getting ready to go out to bid. We're waiting the final plans and specs to do that. I anticipate that will be this month. And then we'll be bringing it to you for award in May, more than likely. And then the project timeline will be dependent on what the contractors bid. So that's really the update on the Low Water Crossing. We're also going to update you, just so you'll know, on all the capital projects on April 7th. So we'll update you again on the Meadow Lake Low Water Crossing, which should know what the closing date is at that point and have a better idea of when we'll be, what date we'll be bringing it to you.
What took us so long to get from the last thing to here?
Well, I think for all of, all of our engineered projects, capital projects in the budget, typically the first half of the year is spent working on design. We've got something like 65 projects, and I think 45 is what we started out, or something like that.
Did we farm this design out then?
We did, yes. Brett Kapanis.
Yeah.
Yes. So, has it been a while? I won't dispute that it's been a while, but I think the good news is that it's almost here. And it's, you know, it's taken a lot of effort by certain key, key leaders in the organization to get it done.
So has it been sitting with, with, with the engineers? They've been sitting with us.
It's actually been split between engineer and my desk.
Okay.
I think it's gone back and forth with some comments
Yeah, it did.
to try and finalize.
You know, as you know, that's down in the floodlights, we have to get encroachment permit, we got to get permit, four, four permit out of court.
True.
So
Yeah, Kapanis told us like a year ago. That'll be no problem. EPA doesn't care. They're fine.
It's just paperwork.
He was the expert engineer that we
I think you'll be pleased with the results.
Good.
So, looking forward. All right, the Downtown Trail Link that we discussed several months ago. Putting that together with some work, the current status of that is we're engaging engineer now to finalize that design. With some of the work that engineering has done, Morally in particular, looking at the route from Monroe that we talked about, from the public schools to downtown to Broadway, over to the connection existing, we talked extensively in October about a route using the mid-block crosswalk here. And, and that's still a viable option. However, something that's changed since the meeting is the pole on Grand over where the Lazy Circles in the Sky art project is, where all that concrete's busted up around the corner. We know we're going to have to fix that. So as we look at that and we think about fixing that, we know we're going to have to fix the pole. The pole's likely going to have to be set back a little bit because that's part of the issue, which involves more engineering, and I understand putting in new cabling, or Morally and Chris could talk more about that. We know we're going to do that and that's probably going to end up in the budget, one way or the other, because it needs to be done. So as part of this project, we're engaging the engineer. We just need to finalize what we're going to tell him on the route. We think that we should probably look at fixing another corner there at Grand as part of that process. Now, it could be very expensive. Our, our experience, I think, with the one at Independence that we, we fixed was, I want to say that was about $100,000 or so. So, so times two, if that's what the number is. I don't, I don't know what the number is, the engineer will tell us, the estimate. We think that, that we might want to do that, but we can still go forward on, on the mid-block. One of the things looking, and you had mentioned very eloquently, if there were several on the Monroe route to get to, to get to State Street, there was a couple of blocks, there was really a couple of blocks with no sidewalk, and that's true.
Two blocks.
But I know Morally's extensively looked at it, and I went out with him today, and on the west side of the public school, most of that sidewalk is not new sidewalk, and it's going to be in need of replacement. And so we haven't reached out to the school yet to see what their plans are. I know on the other side, they've put new sidewalk in, so that could be a possibility of jogging over a street going that way. The Integris Heart Facility that's new has good sidewalk, and State Street has good sidewalk. So, in engaging the engineer, we're likely going to come from Monroe straight on up on the west side of the school system, unless it's more advantageous to cut over a block to the east and look at that new sidewalk. I drove that today too. Morally may have already looked at it. It does look like there's new sidewalk all the way from York to Illinois. So, but, then if we cut back over, don't, we're going to pick up a block where we would have had Integris. So, this project's been long talked about, including just a few months ago. I, I think the difference between now and a few months ago is we're going to be engaging an engineer, I'm expecting in the next week or so, we're going to be updating you on the 7th of April with our status and then our, and our specs for this. We want the design done before the end of the fiscal year. That allows us to get the cost estimate to ensure that we can either, we can either put it in a new budget, or we could potentially budget some which you've referred to as rollover, leftover, or, or funds at the end of the year, which we know we're going to have some. We talked about it the last meeting, or in fact, when we appropriated some street money.
I really, I don't want to overcomplicate this. We have, like, I understand the block along the high school, on the West Edge of High School isn't perfect, that someday, there is no way the high school doesn't address that chunk of sidewalk and parking eventually. And I would really, really not like to kick this down the road for another year of engineering. This, this just doesn't inherently seem that complicated. We, we're at the trail dead ends to downtown if we use the crossing that exists now, that isn't going to cost a quarter million dollars and 18 months of engineering to get to it grand. Because, God, I don't want to even, I don't want to bet on doing this, that that goes smoothly. There is no way that touching anything in that intersection is going to be simple. There's just no way it's going to happen. We have a mid-block intersection. We have two blocks of sidewalk we got to do. And let's do the two blocks of sidewalk that are missing between the high school and football stadium. Let's mark it as the trail, and if that means that part of the sidewalk along the side of the high school, it's not our property, we're not touching it, it is marked as trail, it's not perfect, the high school will absolutely get to it. They inevitably will get to it. But I don't want to, just because there are some imperfect spots, kick this down the road again. And if this one's been, so, I, I'd really like to not engage near engineering firm with, with some mandate to do some big, grand thing because they're going to come back to us with a half-million-dollar plan. And really, I don't, I, that's not what I'm asking. I don't think anybody thinks that that is necessary. We can do like two blocks of sidewalk, use what we got. We have one more block we got to figure out along between the fire department and birth wise. And otherwise, it's just little tiny piece, we, this doesn't need to be a, a half-million-dollar project. There's no reason for this to be a half-million-dollar project. This is intersection we got, couple of blocks of sidewalk, some signage. I just, please, don't let this turn into, I mean, when we hand these things to engineers, all respect, things tend to get overly complicated sometimes. They tend to, the engineers give you the this is to meet all the absolute criteria, to check every conceivable box, to be perfect in every way, shape, or form, and, and, oh, and you have to pay for it. I mean, this is, doesn't have to be that complicated. I mean, am I overthinking this? I mean, can, can we do this simply?
The only complicating factor is we have to follow.
Yeah, but you got to fix it anyway. And, and listen, if we can get a pedestrian intersection there at some point, great, fantastic. Like, go, go chase down that rabbit hole. But I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. I don't think it's going to happen this next fiscal year. I think if we have to move that pole, so, yeah, it's got to be done.
It's got to be done soon.
Right, 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 sure. But if we have to move that pole, I mean, there's no way that happens quickly or cheaply. And I don't want to not have a trail connection for another 18 months while this really complicated intersection issue and signaling issue gets figured out. So if we can do a pedestrian intersection there, great, we should do it. It's a, it should have a pedestrian intersection there. Reasonably, absolutely. But since that's going to be a while, can we just get this part done? Because it's not creating any duplicative work. Where, this is, this much of the trail's got to get done anyway.
We can tell the engineer to design it how we want to design, how you want to design it. So I don't know that there's, if we don't touch the old sidewalk, I don't know that ADA's triggered.
That's, that's what I want. I don't want to touch the old sidewalk. I want to trust that the school will eventually
I'll check with them too, but
Yeah.
I, I hear your point, because that's, that's two blocks, that's two more blocks. And those blocks have elevation issues and
Yeah, I don't want to touch those.
Other issues, so. Morally, Chris, I, I don't see any issue if we give the specs to the engineer, fix the two blocks, recognize that we're some of it probably isn't, is still going to meet ADA, but it's old stuff?
Well, since the, that in particular intersection will probably come back as a budget item. The pole is a problem. It's going to become a safety problem. I think we could easily disconnect that from the rest of it.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and if we can do a pedestrian intersection there, great. I mean, we don't have to Yeah, I mean, but we don't have to, those, these things don't have to get tied together. And it, it seems like this project in particular has got, a couple different times started to creep a little bit, a little bit of feature creep, it gets bigger, more complicated. Okay, so we need to set it aside until we can get these three other things checked, then. But, but this, this can be a simple thing. We can just very simply get our trails connected with
Take a look at it, sorry.
Two blocks. Maybe three blocks if you include from, by the fire department where our crossing here is. Got to get connected there a little bit. There's not sidewalk right there, but, okay, so three blocks. It's
It'd be a little more than three blocks going that way, but
But really close. I assure you that will be less than the intersection.
That will help us with the negotiation with the engineer, I'm sure. So that's probably what, that is what we're going to try. So we'll update you again on the 7th. So you'll know what the expectations are. And then we're still tracking to be, have the design done by June.
Fantastic.
Okay.
And then we can do some, some signage and some branding and some, making it all a cohesive thing with marking and distances and all that, once we know or once we have some better idea of what route we're
We're, we're going to work on the, start, we're going to work on the map first to, to, to address what you talked about last time and what anybody else is looking for on trail signage. We have some pedestrian and bike routes out there that you've eloquently mentioned are lacking several things, such as insurance updated, including the university routes, connection points, bathrooms, distances between stops, those kind of things. So we've got a group going tomorrow. We'll come out with an action plan on that, and we can update you where we're at on the 7th. And when we finalize this trail link plan and that map, I think the map will help us with the signage, because we can translate that to the signage we want to put wherever we're going to put it, as well as make brochures and put it around town and
I still want to build a bunch of signs without this link, if we can get this done quickly. I mean, if, if it was going to be another 18 months before we get this link done, let's go and do the signs, but we can do this quickly.
I don't think it's going to be another 18 months, because we're going to report to you in April. to you in April, and I know that you're all going to hold us accountable, so.
Fantastic.
Well, that's the update.
It would be lovely.
Okay. Any other questions on trail connection from downtown area? Trail connection, trails in general, can, I don't know if I can talk about that during this, or is that a violation?
Well, let's see. Meadow Lake Low Water Crossing Downtown Trail Link and Trail Signage. Well, could, could it be related to the link and trail signage throughout the town?
Which is in that town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. I know a lot of people that use the trails that we put in, and they really value them. Some of the people are from the Bay, the Enid Running Club uses them extensively. The one thing that's missing is any significant amount of, significant, significant amount of bathrooms. We have like one bathroom in one place, and you've got to run two miles one way and two miles the other way and hope that's good enough. So I, I think we need to look at, how far are they spaced? I'm not suggesting it ought to be every mile, I'm just saying, we maybe don't have enough right now. And I know there's concerns, I don't want to put in active plumbing everywhere, I'm not trying to do that. I'm thinking more like the golf course bathrooms that they put in, and maybe even make them unisex, I think that'd be fine. But I think we need to have places for people to take care of themselves as they're trying to be fit. So, just something to look at, not an action item or anything like that, just a suggestion that I'd, I'd like us to consider.
I think it's quite well-taken, because as I mentioned on the map, bathrooms, I'm more aware of the Cleveland trail here.
Well, Don Haskins is on the, I mean.
You're right, Don Haskins.
On the trail.
But I think from, if you go from Garland to what, all the way to Beadmore and Company Bathrooms.
We could go by the Cleveland.
Yeah, just the one.
We could potentially look at, I don't know if this is, what you're saying is that the bathrooms at the golf course, I want to say were about 20,000 apiece. Those were turnkey, and they're not hooked up to sewer.
Right.
We could certainly look at things like that, if we want to figure out where to strategically put them.
Right.
I don't know if we want to put porta potties, but we do that in some cases in the parks. So if it's a dire need, we could address right now, we want a porta potty, if that's what we wanted to do, in a certain place. Like, I'm thinking Oakwood Road, at Garland, there's, where the new soccer facility will be, we had put in for a trailhead grant there. We got turned down, but we're going to turn in for it again in July.
Yep.
And I'm confident that there's going to be bathrooms there, whether it's.
At the soccer field, yeah.
So, so I'm thinking that might be able to do some double duty.
Okay.
And that's a two-mile stretch from Cleveland to Garland.
Right.
So that might take care of that. Good point on Broadway.
Yep.
So we have two.
Okay.
Meadow Lake Park has bathrooms.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Once the Low Water Crossing.
Where it loops around.
And then, there's a possibility of the next trail going up towards Vance, that would be a, a great spot where there's a bathroom and parking to do trail interventions.
That's right.
All right. Good. Just something that we kind of kept our eyes on. Appreciate it. All right. Item number eight, discuss recently conducted town hall meeting and plans for future town hall meetings.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a brief opportunity. I've talked to some of you, I think some of you, some of you may be that. I will tell you the first two folks, well-meaning folks that have complaints, that talked for a long time. Quite frankly, that's not the format that we had in mind. But at the time, we, we didn't try to rein them in, because we thought they came to speak their piece, so we thought that might be best. Going forward, we would probably try to redirect some of that to somewhere else, or focus on a question. But I thought I'd start off the discussion with, out of that, one of the things that I've got, that I know a couple of you want to talk about, is the accessory building ordinance. I think that's something that's coming probably on April 7th. That could impact, I suppose, Mr. Mongold's situation. But what'd you guys think? We did it for you guys. Was it, what would you like to see differently, and how often do you want to do them?
You know, I was impressed with the amount of feedback I had from people that weren't there, but touched it or read about it. Really good idea.
Was impressed by the turnout.
Yeah, Mo, he called me from Dallas. He watched it.
Eddie?
From Richardson, Texas. Told me he was really impressed, and he was happy to see that Enid is doing some positive things, and he gave me a few pointers and a few suggestions, but he thought it was something that was needed, and he was impressed that we were willing to be transparent with our community.
Yeah. That was my assessment as well, and the feedback I've got is very similar to that. So.
And everywhere I went, I heard about it, even today. People felt like it was a good thing.
Yeah.
So I told them, next time, come.
Yep. Yep. All right. You asked about duration, how often should we do it? What do you guys think?
No, less than once a year. I, I would like to see, if, if not at least once a year, maybe twice, but particularly with the turnout that we've got, but I'd much rather have one and have four people show up than, you know, get it to where we just have a room full of angry people, because we haven't done it in a significant amount of time. So, based on what we had and how many people we had come out, and really only had two people who were just, you know, enraged, and just other people just looking for, for help.
Right.
I think it's something that we should, we should continue to do. So like I said, at least once a year, maybe twice a year.
I think semi-annually is a good place to start. I think we try another one in six months, see what happens there. If, like you said, it turns into two people, maybe we do it once a year. If it turns into 150 people, maybe we need to do a corner, I mean, I don't know. But we got to start somewhere. So, I think six months is a good idea for next one. Okay. Any else?
September?
I think we could also do a better job, and I know it's the, it's the worst meeting of the year, but the, but the budget season's also the most important meeting, and it's the most important, it's anybody who wants to make some real significant change in the next fiscal year, that's your best shot to show up and talk about it. We could probably do a better job of doing something to explain the mechanics to the community of that budget system, because it, I mean, we've had a few times, not real often, not even every year, but we've had somebody show up with, hey, I'm actually here, sign up to talk on this budget item, and actually, as the public come, I think I would like to, you know, I would suggest this. And, my God, it shockingly happens. And so if, for folks who, I don't want to just have these meetings and, and open ourselves up to the public just for that kind of feedback, I mean, this is coming up, somebody's best chance to make a difference in some specific, concrete way. Maybe we could do a better job than we have of explaining it.
You mean the budget hearing or a separate meeting from that, or?
No, I mean, tell people about the budget here. I don't think we need to have a separate meeting. I mean, we have, we have a schedule, we have budget meetings. That's, the entire community has a right to show up at any of those budget meetings and talk about any item they think is a waste of money, or something else they'd like to see happen. But nobody ever really does it, and I don't think it's out of lack of, I don't think it's a lack of desire to have an impact. I think it's mostly folks don't understand how it works, and, and maybe we could, as much as I don't want those meetings to be longer, really, I don't. I think it's the better chance for somebody to make some change. We could do a better job of that.
We can certainly put out the word. We did through our communication channels with Derek, and we had a pretty good response at the town hall. I would say there was more people there than I've ever seen at a budget hearing, so.
Absolutely.
We can put out the same kind of advertising effort to come and talk about your budget.
Well, or, I mean, just, we should give folks a shot, because if, if you had a project or something you wanted to see happen, that's when you should come talk to us, when we're about to spend all the money.
In addition to that, one of the things that was almost resounding, and everybody who came up there and spoke, it was interaction with city, city staff in terms of negative interaction.